Good morning.
[inaudible]
Call to order the legislative session 2017-29 for the Conca County Council for December 19th, 2017. Those that like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer Pledge of Allegiance, please stand.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, and thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and glory forever. Amen.
For we are legions to defy the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda, entertain a motion to approve the legislative minutes from December 5th, 2017.
Shall move.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from November 21st in reference to the Animal Ordinance Committee.
Shall move.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from November 21st in reference to the capital improvement program, the amendment to them.
Shall move.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion is carried, minutes are approved. Good morning, Mr. Taylor.
Morning. Two items this morning for public hearing. These are both legislative bills that were, have been introduced already. The first one is amended legislative bill 2016-06 and its amendment number one to that bill. It was introduced November 21st by the council president at the request of the county executive. It is an act to amend, confirm, and correct the general fund revenue and expense budget for the fiscal year 2017 to reflect adjustments to the revenue and expense budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2017. There is a summary page, it's at PDF in your briefing book online, PDF page 54, which indicates that $1,094,350 of new revenue is coming into the budget primarily from the use of prior year end fund balance, a little bit over $1 million of that fund balance. And it's being used, there are a couple of actual decreases in two items in the budget, which are the contingency and the elections budget reduction allocation. There are increases in the PEG grants. PEG, as I understand it, is, relates to the Comcast franchise, that's a small amount, $19,000 and change. The main item is increase in the Board of Education principal and interest, in other words debt service on the bonds, that's a little less than $1 million. There are two other items, county interest on capital investment, that's $153,000 and change, and there's mosquito control vehicle maintenance, a little less than $1,000. So essentially it balances out on each side, $1,094,350, and that is that particular bill.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. At this time, we open the floor for a public hearing on amended legislative bill number 2016-06, amendment number one. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this legislative bill, come to the voting, please state your name and your county of residence. That concludes the public hearing for legislative bill 2016-06, amendment number one. Entertain a motion from council to approve amended legislative bill number 2016-06, amendment number one.
Shall move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, to take a vote, we'll start with Councilman Matt Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Davis.
Aye.
Councilman Joe Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Kilmer.
Aye.
Vice President Dodd.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Amended legislative bill number 2016-06, amendment number one passes. Next is amended legislative bill 2017-05, and this is amendment number two to that bill. It was amended, as you recall, this is the current year's budget, it was amended last summer, so that was the first amendment, this is the second. This was introduced November 7, 2017 by the council president at the request of the county executive. It is an act to amend Exhibit A and C of the annual budget and appropriation bill, open parant legislative bill number 2017-05, adopted June 12, 2017, to increase revenue projections and to increase departmental expense appropriations to rebalance the current fiscal year 2018 operating budget for general fund operations. And this one, there's also a summary sheet for it, it is at PDF page 88 if you want to look at it. I can summarize it real quickly. Into the general fund is coming $1,890,500 of new money, part of it, a small part, $120,000 is PEG fee revenue, the greater part of it, $1,770,500, is use of prior year fund balance. Now, into the general fund, those expenditures increases to balance it are, workman's compensation is being increased to $150,000, $210,000 is being transferred to the airport enterprise fund, there are PEG grants of $120,000. The big item is interest on the Board of Education bonds and also other county bonds, and that is something in excess of $1 million, about a million and a half dollars. So that's the general fund part of it. Now, there's also a portion that applies to the airport enterprise fund. As I mentioned, there's $210,000 coming in from the general fund, that's listed as inter-fund transfer. There's landing fee revenue, which as I understand it is essentially a new revenue item this year because of the arrangement with Piedmont, and then there is $254,000 of additional prior year fund balance money being transferred into the airport enterprise fund. It's going to be used for aero maintenance, $325,000, professional services, $75,000, capital building and improvement of $210,000. So each side, revenue and expense is $610,000 to balance. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. This time, we open the floor for public hearing on amended legislative bill 2017-05, amendment number two. If you have any comments you'd like to make in reference to this bill, come to the voting, please state your name and your county of residence. That concludes the public hearing. Entertain a motion from council.
Shall move.
On amended bill, legislative bill number 2017-05, amendment number two. You have a motion, second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I've got a couple of questions. And this was brought up before, I don't know who wants to answer them, but the inter-fund transfer and the prior fund balance that's going to the airport, being it's an enterprise fund, shouldn't that be done as a loan?
I guess that would be, who would like to address that?
Good morning. Dawn Parks, Director of Finance. The transfer, the $210,000 into capital, even though it is an enterprise fund, as long as we aren't helping them cover their operating expenses, it does not have to be a loan. If we were to help them with operating, yes, we would probably loan them the money. Right now, I don't think that the, the airport, we are trying to help them get their infrastructure back up to par so that they can bring in new clients. We've discussed loans during the, in the CIP, we'll look at it even more, but for what we're doing here is, we did not do it as a loan. The general fund, we have.
Well, this makes it not a true enterprise fund.
No, an enterprise fund, you can, the, we can give them money, we just can't support their operating, just like with the roads department, if you remember back to 2015, the general fund was having to support them, we were having to support their operations, and once we were truly supporting that, we had to bring them back into the general fund. This is for capital. For capital, we can, the general fund can give them money for that.
Well, I know we can, I'm just wondering why, I mean, if it's supposed to be enterprise, enterprise fund is, an enterprise department is an enterprise department, one way or the other.
They are being able to pay for their operating, at least if the budget bill passes, right now their budget got cut quite a bit, they're being able to do their operating. It's the extra, the taking care of the grounds and the infrastructure that they're struggling with doing. Once it gets called up, I believe they will be able to, in the future, take care of that.
I thought, excuse me, departments that had enterprise funds were supposed to be self-sufficient.
Their operating is self-sufficient.
And then we start, turn around and give money?
We're giving money for infrastructure, for county infrastructure.
For that department?
For that, for that department, yes.
Wayne, you have a comment?
Yeah, there's not, there's not an airport in the country that doesn't receive funding from outside sources for its infrastructure. State of Maryland owns BWI and Hagerstown and provides almost all the funding for infrastructure at those two airports. We have discussed this with PKS. The enterprise designation has nothing to do with us supporting capital expenditures at the airport, two entirely different topics. Enterprise is operating, it has nothing to do with capital investment.
Well, sometimes capital falls into capital, sometimes it does fall into operating.
You're talking about departmental capital, you're talking about furniture, you're talking about vehicles.
I'm talking about capital, yeah, well, capital as it is, I guess it depends on the degree of the expense as to whether it's a major capital expense, and of course, whether it's being bonded, as long as how long the, how long the term of the loan might be.
Yeah.
But a capital expense to a certain degree is part of your operating cost.
Has to do with the life of the asset. So if the life of the asset is an asset that would extend more than seven years, it's considered a long-term asset. So there's, there's a distinct difference between what we call departmental capital, which would be things like, you know, furniture, vehicles, those things that depreciate over a relatively short period of time, and assets that have a 20-year or more life, and that's what we're talking about here. The airport, I mean, you know, on the one hand, we say, look at the airport, look at how it has over time deteriorated because we haven't injected any capital in it, that's what we're trying to do here.
Right.
We're trying to develop the airport as the asset that it really should be for the county. It can't generate that capital itself, it just can't possibly do it.
I wasn't asking these questions to be in opposition to it.
No, no, I understand.
My, my point was that if you want a true cost of operating and what it costs to operate something, if the airport was to go out and get money from someone else other than the county, that would be a loan, and that would show a true cost of what it takes to operate the airport. So by just transferring money in, at basically some point in time, you say, like the roads was taken back into enterprise fund, it doesn't show what really the true cost of, of operating that, that department is.
The true cost, the true cost of operating.
And maintaining, excuse me.
The true cost of operating the airport in that case would be reflected in the depreciation that's booked against the airport. So when you looked at the income and expense statement, you would take into account the depreciation of a 20-year asset, say, and, and you would recognize that as a real expense.
Larry?
Yeah, to touch on what Joe said, I was getting ready to say the same thing, my comments were not opposing the airport.
No, I understand.
I do understand the state and the county, how they support the airport, so I just wanted to clarify.
No, I understand.
The enterprise fund that we were just talking about.
Jeff, go ahead, John.
Okay. Yeah, I think we all know that there's, and I know you guys are both in favor, but you just questioned, it's a great question, but we all know, I think, that with the longevity deferred maintenance, that we know that there's, we're going to be, the county's going to be obligated to a lot of capital expenses, no matter what they might be, how, how, how small or how large.
And that's what we're trying to do, and that's what we're trying to do here, we're trying to, to.
Get it back.
Position the airport to be where it should be at this point in time and where it needs to be in the future. So it is a good question, and, and, and it is one that we posed to PKS because we wanted to be sure that according to, to Gatsby, that we weren't causing a problem with it being designated as, as an enterprise fund, and we were told that it does not cause a problem.
Could this be part of the fallout from the fact of the difference of opinion of how they allowed for their depreciation on their books?
I'm not sure I understand the question, John.
I know there was a big, about a year ago, there was a big concern as to whether or not they were allowing for depreciation, if I'm not mistaken, John?
Probably three years ago.
Yeah, the discussion at that time, I know what you're saying, the discussion at the time with the, the airport commission was one in which it was being asserted that the airport was making money.
Right.
And the fact of the matter was that the airport, if you recognized depreciation was not making money, you know, again, to go back to it, there's not an airport with passenger service in the country that really makes money. You rely on outs, outside sources of funds to maintain and improve the, the, the infrastructure. So the point at the time was, John, that if you recognize depreciation with, I, which I consider a real expense.
Right.
Because as that asset depreciates, you know, at some point in time, it has to be either improved or it has to be replaced, that is a real expense, and when you incorporate depreciation, the airport was not making money. So, so you're right.
Okay.
You're right in that regard.
Okay. Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you, Don, thank you, thank you, Wayne. All those in favor of amended legislative bill 2017-05, amendment number two, we'll start with Councilman Hall.
Aye.
Councilman Kilmer.
Aye.
Vice President Dodd.
Aye.
Councilman Joe Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Ernie Davis.
Aye.
Councilman Matt Holloway.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Amended legislative bill 2017-05, amendment number two passes. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Good morning, Mrs. Hurley.
Good morning, Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen. The next item on the agenda is resolution number 159, 2017, to authorize the county executive to accept a donation of property from Connolly Mill Associates, LLP, consisting of 234.67 acres, more or less, located on the southerly side of Connolly Mill Road, adjacent to the Henry S. Parker Athletic Complex. This resolution was introduced on November 21st, tabled to allow administration more time to gather additional information. They have now received the environmental assessment, and Mr. Weston Young, director, or Deputy Director of Administration, is here to review that report.
Thank you, Mrs. Hurley. Entertain a motion to approve resolution 159, 2017. Shall move. Second?
Second.
Motion's second. Good morning. Good morning. If you want to introduce yourself.
Sure.
We have one more.
Okay.
How are you? Very good. If you could, John, just for the public to know who you are and who you represent, thank you.
My name is Rich Rhodes, I'm Environmental Manager for John D. Hines and Associates.
I'm John Hines, President of Hines and Associates.
And as Laura mentioned, Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration for the county. So I wanted to start off that we received the Phase One environmental report and a limited Phase Two, and if it's acceptable, I'll give an overview, and then we can open it up to questions. Starting with the Phase One report, it indicated four potential environmental concerns. The first was weather stripping, was found partially buried in one of the excavated areas that was used for stormwater pond slash borrow pit, we may use those words interchangeably, their intentions were stormwater ponds, so pardon me if I say borrow pit. They recommended ultimately that we perform a ground penetrating radar survey over key, key parts of the site to see if there is indeed anything else buried. I'll touch on them later, we did take one of the county excavators out there to do some test pits. They also found some debris, it ranged from household trash and construction debris to a burned-out car, a burned-out boat, there's also a recreational trailer falling apart back there, and the recommendation there is that we do a subsurface evaluation around those sites to see if there was any local contamination, that is groundwater and soil testing, possibly some test pits as well, to see if anything was buried. The third potential environmental concern, firing range backstops, this one kind of caught me by surprise. These are associated with the City of Salisbury firing range, they're naturally concerns of lead contamination around firing ranges, backstops and all of that. Digging into that a bit deeper, we learned, and this is my understanding, how it was explained to me, that the firing range has been there over 50 years, and it wasn't always contained. Some of the deputies we spoke to remember going through trails and shooting at pop-up targets, so that's, that's something to, to, to keep in mind. The EPA doesn't, while they provide recommendations for good housekeeping, cleaning up afterwards, they do not actively regulate firing ranges. The fourth item of concern, looking at old aerial photos, there were structures on the site. It looked to be like a cluster of farmhouses, part of where the housing footprint was is in one of the excavated areas, the stormwater ponds, however, there's naturally going to be concerns where there are underground storage tanks present. There was nothing on file, typically they have to be registered to be in the state database, so that's, that's another area where test pits would be, would be likely. I failed to mention with the firing range, the Phase One recommended we do both soil and groundwater samples closer to that area to see if there is lead contamination, but remember, remember the contaminant lead for when we get into our limited Phase Two. Also on site, which, which wasn't necessarily a major concern, but it, it did pose more questions, there, there were two monitoring wells on the site, one was, had a, had an official registration on it, the other looked more like groundwater as if you were going to do a septic tank or try to get a site to per, to see the groundwater levels. But for both, there was, I guess the specific purposes of said wells were not determined in the Phase One study. So in summary of the Phase One, based on the results, if that was all we had, we would recommend additional tests and additional time, and I'll, I'll touch on that. However, also as part of this, we did a limited Phase Two. That involved some test pits, which I alluded to earlier, some areas of concern from a visual inspection by Hines indicated that there were some areas to dig further, and they did uncover the weather stripping that was, that was found partially buried, and I believe they found some electrical wire elsewhere, but nothing, nothing major. Then three water samples were obtained, I'll call them east, central, and west. The east was located in the smaller 16-acre pond, east being closer to the railroad, closer to the firing range, central and west being in the larger pond, the 21-acre pond. These are areas where the ponds were dug down to groundwater level, however, they are exposed to the surface elements, so that includes rainwater, that includes a host of things. They did a rather comprehensive panel of tests to see what, what could potentially be on there, and I will name those. They tested for total petroleum hydrocarbons, diesel range organics, they tested for volatile organic compounds and semi-volatile organic compounds, they tested for PCBs, pesticides, herbicides, and they tested for priority pollutant metals. The results in all three samples were that for all but the metals, there was no detection, so no herbicides, pesticides, petroleum. However, the metals did have a positive hit. If you turn to in the Phase Two that, that you were all sent, there's a table called Analytical Results Water Samples, and they give the metals found, so there's trace amounts of metals, and then in the far right column, you have the Maryland cleanup standards, that's sort of the threshold, the EPA and state will set thresholds for different contaminants, whether you're drinking in it, bathing in it, whatever, and what they recommend is healthy. In some cases, there, there is no healthy level of a contaminant. So the, the four main metals that exceeded thresholds included arsenic, chromium, lead, and nickel. Arsenic can be found and has been found naturally occurring in these areas, however, the other metals tend, tend to be less so, although it's still possible, it's, it's very less likely. The thing I, I noticed is that if you go east to west, with the exception of the beryllium found, it generally goes high and then gets lower, and in some cases, non-detectable by the time you get to the west sample, so it seems like groundwater's flowing east to west. I spoke with the Health Department who handles groundwater pollution control and so forth, and they confirmed that it generally heads west to southwest, the groundwater in that location. So I have Hines here to discuss specifics of the study. As I mentioned before, both the Phase One and the results of the Phase Two, really, if, if we were to accept this donation, further study would be required before we, before we make an ultimate decision. Either way, knowing that we have a very high amount of lead in a sample in the county, I would think we would want to continue to look into this and see what our options are for that, even if we do not accept the parcel. And, you know, if we, if we come across the source, you can make, so if you can prove that your neighbor's the one causing your, your pollution, they, they will be required to clean that up, however, there's, there's efforts and steps and cost in source tracking, and that would be hopefully included in, in a Phase Two. Lastly, and I'll gladly turn it over if they want to fill in on anything I left out by accident, we have a deadline of December 29th. I brought up that at least the executive office is uncomfortable accepting the donation based on what we've seen, and further, if, if we were to accept the donation, further studies would be required. They, I guess the board is meeting internally, but tentatively, the, the offer that's, that's out there is that they will extend into 2018, knowing that we're, assuming we're doing those studies, but they, they would ask that we cover this year's taxes, so basically that is a 18, oh, I know, it's, it's an $18,000 option. So with that, you know, this wasn't the news we, we, we wanted to hear on the site because the site has potential, but with that, any questions?
I got, yeah, well, I've got a couple of questions before you go, Mr. Hines and Mr. Rhodes. When you were talking about the var buried, weather stripping, you didn't include that 10 foot below the surface, they found product buried at one site and another site eight foot below the surface.
Yeah, I apologize about that, it's, the water samples were the big concern of mine.
And your other, the other thing, you said whether we do anything or not, that the lead situation's going to have to be explored, so, in other words, if, if the property's accepted by the county or if it's not accepted by the county due to the fact we know it's there, there's going to have to be some action taken. the county due to the fact we know it's there, there's going to have to be some action taken. Is that what you said?
Well, I'm not saying the county necessarily has to take action, but we would be concerned. Similar to, you know, we mentioned the Morris Mill example previously. Those were county citizens impacted by polluted groundwater. We got involved to help mitigate that. So knowing that there is such high lead values, we should see and help, possibly help facilitate a solution to that.
The other question, the two wells, maybe this is a question for Mr. Rhodes or Mr. Hines. The two wells that was onsite, one you said looked like might have been something from the health department for a perp. Did the other well look like it was something that was put there where somebody had been testing the groundwater before? Is there a possibility that these problems were already known on this property?
Well, you have two questions there. One is, was it a well that was used to sample? And then whether or not it was known it was contamination? It looks like a monitoring well, so somebody would use a monitoring well to sample groundwater. The purpose of the monitoring well may or may not be because they know there's contamination. They may use a monitoring well to evaluate groundwater, to get information about the groundwater. It's also possible that they would use a monitoring well to determine groundwater flow direction, which is another reason to install a monitoring well.
That wouldn't, you would have not known about that well until you visited the site? I mean, you had nothing to do with the well being put there?
Correct. We didn't know, Hines and Associates didn't know the well was onsite.
You'd never been there before.
It didn't know the other pipe was onsite either. And I had not been on the site before.
Okay, all right. That's all I have for the next minute.
Yeah, that was one of the questions I had, the monitoring wells. What were the monitoring wells doing onsite? And I know you were trying to explain, but it was kind of vague, and it really didn't give us an answer why it was there. That kind of makes me feel uncomfortable. What were they testing for? And that's the first time I heard of the water and direction. The hydrocarbons, you didn't mention anything, you did mention hydrocarbons along with the other metals and that, but what, did you say anything about different levels of hydrocarbons that were tested or found underground or in the water?
The testing that we did did not identify any sort of hydrocarbons in those three water samples that were collected.
So you feel comfortable there's no hydrocarbons in those areas?
In those areas, correct.
Okay. The lead, those numbers sound kind of outrageous, outrageously high, I would suggest. So who would be the neighbors that might clean that up?
That would require additional testing.
Right. That didn't answer my question.
Yeah.
Who are the neighbors?
We can't say for certain.
You don't know yet?
No, but we have a good indication, given its location and the specific contaminants, but we don't want to point out something unless we've done further research.
But if they own a property, shouldn't they be responsible for it?
For, yeah.
So you shouldn't have to track anybody, just the owners that own the property?
Well, if it's your neighbor polluting you, and you find pollution on your property, you can clean up your property, but if the source isn't cleaned, it's just going to presumably continue leaching onto your property. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but...
So if we do further, if further studies, whether we do it or not, if further studies were done, and they could indicate, hey, this came from the railroad, or this came from the industrial properties to the east, or if it came from, you know, a nearby shooting range, then they can make those other properties do it. We don't know who, where these pollutants came from.
So are we going to be one responsible trying to find these or the owner?
No, not right now. If we accept the donation or consider, before we accept the donation, I would think we would track this down and know what we're getting into.
We or them?
I said before we accept the donation. We would want that identified. So we could put it on them, but it's less likely.
Yeah, I had actually one more question. You talked about the aerial view and the farmhouses. Was there any testing done in the area of those farmhouses?
No, no testing.
Do you think it should be done?
It's recommended.
Okay. And this property, I think, I know you know how I feel about it, but I'm really uncomfortable if we accept it and then we have to use the taxpayers to clean it up. I would like to see all of this addressed before we have a vote on it. And I think you kind of recommended that.
Yes, yeah, no, just the Phase One alone, I would have come before you and said, there's additional testing. That's the ground penetrating radar to see what. Now, I do apologize, I didn't go into everything that was buried. The water samples were what were the main red flag to me. But the ground penetrating radar would then proceed to show us what else could be in that site. And of course, we'd want to look for where we've seen debris, and then where those old houses were to see if there was anything buried around there.
And I do appreciate the work you guys have done, and I appreciate you being straightforward with us.
So what would a cleanup look like? You know, lead is, you know, these seem high for the Maryland cleanup standard. I'm not sure how actually, you know, high they are in real terms. I mean, what would it take to clean up a site like that? How much time would that take? How much money would it potentially take? Do you have any idea about that, or that's...
And eventually, it boils down to how extensive the contamination is. And that would be part of any sort of additional evaluation, where, how far aerially it extends, where it might be coming from. Is it originating from an onsite source or something offsite? So with the information we have, there's really no way to determine what might be necessary to remediate the lead contamination.
So one thing I didn't see in all these papers was a bill from you guys. I'm sure that we'll get one. How far is the county executive's office willing to go? How much are they willing to spend to try to see if we further want to acquire this property? Is it time to wash our hands of it and forget it? We've, you know, we've seen that, we've been told we've got to spend more money if we're going to take it, I suppose. I guess maybe that's a question for county executive maybe, but is it time to wash our hands and forget it? I mean, obviously, there's a lot of problems here. We probably, I have no idea how much we've spent. I've seen some estimates that came in in the beginning, but are we wanting to spend more money?
As Rich mentioned, there's a lot of unknowns. And the first determination would be where's the source? And then if it's onsite, it's all on us if we accept the property. If it turns out to be the neighbor, then our cost to clean up, or a neighbor or multiple neighbors, our cost to clean up would go down significantly because then we can put it on the producer. But again, those are unknowns. I'll say we, the results of the Phase One and limited Phase Two have made the office hesitant to accept the donation. And part of, instead of pulling it from the agenda, we wanted to come before council to gauge council's interest in proceeding further as well.
Well, I know that the water samples are a concern, and that's a big concern, the biggest concern. But I also find when you, and maybe John or Mr. Rhodes could lure this a little bit, digging something up from 10-foot in the ground, isn't that a little unusual?
Let me help to clarify that. The embankments at the sides of the former borrow pits are steep. We didn't find the material 10 feet below the bottom of the borrow pit. We found it in the embankment along the borrow pit. So it wasn't below where we thought they had excavated. So it didn't look like someone dug a hole and put it in the bottom of the borrow pit. It looked like whoever was depositing, deposited on the slopes of the borrow pit.
For the groundwater, if you did determine what the source was of the lead, and that were able to be cleaned up, being that there's already lead contamination on this site, how long does it take for that to dissipate? Or when would these numbers, if the source were taken away, when do you expect a number like 840 to go down to 15? I mean, is that all based on groundwater flow, or is that something that would actually need to be remediated on the site as well?
Again, it would depend on the source. The length of time that that might remain in the ground does have something to do with the groundwater flow, because that will tend to, number one, dilute it a bit, also moves it in the direction of groundwater flow, which is likely south-southwest. The extent to how long it is in this subsurface, it's just, I could not put a number on that.
Mr. Taylor? I have a question for you. I'm not completely familiar with your legal background. In circumstances involving real estate transaction, who normally pays for the environmental studies? Is it the buyer or the seller?
General rule, it's the buyer.
It is the buyer?
Yeah, general rule.
Okay.
I think one other thing to consider was, given that this is presumably, I mean, we would need further tests and there's subsurface evaluations, but from the groundwater contamination that we found, if we were proposing uses that did not touch the groundwater, you know, we would need to figure out, is there liability there? What's the liability there? But again, we got this report yesterday afternoon, and we've had probably a few hours before you all received it to review it as well. So we're not sure what our options were, if there are options present that say, do these values affect us if we do not put in a well and we do not dig out the ponds?
How long will it take to do a more complete study?
It would probably be a phased approach. The primary goal would be to find out whether it's an onsite source or an offsite source. So we would probably start with a groundwater study to see, to verify which way the groundwater is coming onto the property, check the groundwater along the property borders on the north and east sides of the property. Installing several monitoring wells. Doing that type of work is probably a 30- to 45-day timeframe. And then dependent on what is found during that part of the investigation, then there'd be decisions made as to, okay, do we need to focus more on offsite sources, or is it something that may be emanating from the property itself? So initial phase, 30 to 45 days.
I think Councilman Joe Holloway's brought up a really good point here, and maybe it's, I don't know if it's preliminary to try to get a consensus from council, but I think there, from what we've been, from what's been discussed and what has been offered, would the council like to take a consensus on two things? One thing would be whether or not we want to continue, whether or not we even approve this, you know, decide to approve this today, whether we would want to commit to the extended long-term testing that will be involved and the expenses that could be incurred. Do we feel comfortable with continuing with these costs? I think that would be the first question we have. And the second question would be, if we decided to delay this, does this, would this body like to see the taxes, the $18,000 in taxes waived for 2017? Does anybody anticipate anything else that we would need to come to a conclusion on today?
If we table this at this point, does this put the responsibility back on the executive to make this decision on whether we want to move forward with this?
I think that might be something that the executive is probably looking for direction from the council as to, you know, whether or not we have an appetite for continuing on with the unknown expenses that could be incurred.
And that was basically my question too, is the executive comfortable with moving forward? Is there, are you leaning towards moving forward? Or do you want to stop it right here?
Well, I have not had a conversation with Mr. Hines personally myself. I need to talk with him, Lester and Mr. Smith, or like I say, we just got this last night, so...
Yeah, I saw the 18th on there, so it was short notice.
Yeah, so I'd like to know what council feels. I mean, if they feel this is valuable, at least property for us to go ahead and move forward on, and we're more than happy to work with it. If not, I want to take the guidance from your council.
Is there any way to table it and just discuss it later? Give all parties time? I know Joe would like to use this.
Well, we all know, to me, a table is the same as a no vote. I think we need to take a vote on this at the time. If any other circumstance developed, it could always come back to the table as, you know, they could rework the resolution, bring it back again.
Bring it back to us?
Yeah. Comments here? Let's do the consensus first.
Comments?
Let's do the consensus first, that if this project is delayed, the request was made to waive the $18,000 in taxes. Opinions from council members? John, would you be in favor of waiving this?
I'm in favor.
Excuse me?
I'm in favor.
You would be. Mark, Larry?
No.
Matt Hollis?
No.
Ernie?
No.
Joe Holland?
No.
Chair would not, so we would not waive the $18,000. I guess the second consensus is whether or not this council feels comfortable with continuing on with the project and the possibility of extended expenses associated with such. Matt?
No, I think we should walk away from it.
Okay, Ernie? Joe?
I'm not comfortable.
Mark?
I'm in favor of continuing.
Chair says no. I think that will lead us to where we need to be here. At this time, if there's any further discussion on Resolution 159, 2017?
I've got just a couple more questions about the map here.
Sure.
Presumed water flow is from north to south?
The groundwater, according to the head of the Wyomaca River is almost due south.
Yes.
So you would think that it's flowing to the south. Now, the health department says in this particular area, Delmar Treatment Plant is to the east. They say it is a west-southwest flow in this region. However, it's generally heading toward south to the...
We've also got the two water bodies.
Yes.
Along the south and east ends the property, and groundwater flow would tend to go towards the confluence of those streams. So it would tend to go...
And where's the gun range?
Gun range is right here.
So my thought is that contamination's coming from northeast, not southeast?
If it were coming from an offsite source, based on the information we have now, that would be the most likely.
Interesting.
If the firing range is contributing to lead contamination on site, it's probably not the only contributor of the contamination on site.
What else? Give us some ideas where lead would come from, other than a gun?
Could be from materials that were deposited onsite, and it could be from industrial operations offsite, which has impacted groundwater offsite and is being transported onsite.
But that's an unknown.
So it's an unknown. So batteries contain lead, for example. So is there localized dumping at the locations or near the locations that we tested? We don't know? Or is it in the groundwater entering the site? We don't know, we haven't done that evaluation?
If there were batteries from automobiles, would you be able to detect acid?
Yes.
Did you?
We didn't. We didn't test for it.
Didn't test for the acid. The pH values would be an indication of whether there might be some acid content. And in the county, a lot of the waters are rather acidic.
Really?
So it would probably be very difficult unless you were right near the source of the contamination.
Interesting.
I'd like to reiterate what Larry Dodd said, Councilman Dodd said, and I thank you two gentlemen for your work, because I know it was, it had to have been last minute. And there's so much data that we have here, we really appreciate everything that you've done. Councilman Joe Holloway, appreciate the fact that you brought that to the council's attention, that you felt that an environmental impact study was necessary before we moved forward. I think that was very instrumental. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor of Resolution 159, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
opposed?
Opposed?
No. Resolution 159, 2017 does not pass. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Weston. Thank you, Weston.
Next, we have Resolution Number 168, 2017, authorizing the county executive to accept a grant award from the governor's office of crime control and prevention under the Burn Justice Assistance Grant... Justice Assistance Grant Program in the amount of $78,000. The Department of Corrections submitted a grant application and has been awarded grant funds that will be used to assist individuals transitioning from incarceration substance abuse treatment to community basis treatment. And we have George Kalamakis, Director of Wycomica County Detention Center.
Entertained motion to approve Resolution 168, 2017?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Good morning. How are you?
You can sit down. Look a little hesitant.
I'd like to make this one final.
All those in favor?
Good morning.
Good morning. If you give us a review, yes, thank you.
George Kalamakis, Director of Department of Corrections. Basically, the notice for funding came late in the fiscal year last year. Normally, we would include these in our budget if we anticipate grant funds coming in. Just briefly, the process, we had to have our submission in by early July. They anticipated a September notification. We just got notified two weeks ago, so it's been quite a delay in this whole process. You may recall, in 2016, we received some small grant monies from the Governor's Office of Crime Control, a little over $16,000, to initiate a medication-assisted treatment orientation reentry. And basically, this was to try to identify people who were leaving the facility in 60 days who had a history of opioid abuse and educate them on VIVITROL, which is the drug of choice for providers, and to try to engage them in treatment upon release. And a part of that program included them actually getting a shot before they left, so they actually left medicated. One of the things that started that was, in the prior year, we had almost probably 10 people leave the detention center clean, detoxed, you know, they had previous histories of opioid use, but they left us in good shape, and within anywhere from three to 14 days they were dead from overdoses because they were going out and using these drugs. So, when they're on VIVITROL, it helps remove the cravings, so they don't go out and seek opioids. So, when the opportunity came for new funding, we talked to the provider, and we wanted to really expand the program to make it a full treatment program at the facility. Currently, our primary treatment program is with the Health Department, and they do assessment and they do treatment groups for both the men and the women. At the time, they weren't doing VIVITROL. They didn't have that in their portfolio of services. So, they were totally supportive, excuse me, Lori Brewster was totally supportive of us working with another provider. And what it does, it gives us actually two options for people seeking treatment, because there are a number of providers in the community. Not everybody goes to the same one. And this, the group we had partnered with, Eastern Shore Psychological, had been one of the first to work in the area with VIVITROL. So, what we were asking to do now, when we were seeking the funding, was to actually expand the program where the provider, Eastern Shore Psychological Services, would be onsite and provide two treatment groups a week for the men and two treatment groups a week for the females. They'll also do their orientation and their assessment intakes. And the funding we requested, the original amount was about $174,900. Of that, $42,000 was in kind, in the form of medication, free from the VIVITROL manufacturer. That brought the total down to about $132,000 that we were asking for in the grant. They've awarded us $78,000, and because we're already well into this fiscal year where the funds must be spent, we've done a little bit of a proration, and I think we're going to need about, basically, $30,000 to do all the other components, which involve blood tests, drug testing, and paying for the second VIVITROL shot that will give each person, leaving two shots before they go. We get one in kind from the manufacturer, and then we'll pay for the other one. That funding would come out of our welfare fund, so there'd be no general fund use at all. So, you know, we have the finances to support it, and we've allowed the provider to continue to work on a limited basis using our welfare fund, so they're really ready to hit the ground running in January if we can have this approved.
Question? In part of the application process, it was noted that, said that the description of the contractual services was treatment group meetings, 50 group meetings at a cost of $1,560. Is the treatment group meetings, is that just another name for VIVITROL dose?
No, that's the actual group sessions.
So, that's part of, and that cost of $1,560 is for one meeting, I guess?
It's how they, let me take a look. So, that was for the, for 50 groups to meet, you know, like 50 sessions, and for both populations. And they basically, they have, they came up with a formula that was, I'm trying to recall from memory, let's say it was like $45 an hour for each person, up to eight people in the group, was the original formula. And then after that, any additional folks in the group, there was no additional charge. So, that was, those were going to be the maximum costs. We could actually have, you know, no limit on the number of people beyond, because we were paying for 10, and we were, but we could always increase that. That was going to be the maximum.
Okay. Does it also include the VIVITROL?
No. The VIVITROL shots, the manufacturer, Archimies, they have a national program, they give everybody one.
Right.
Well, if the person gets the second shot, I'll be paying for that out of our welfare fund.
Right. I heard you say that. I wasn't sure whether or not there was also additional costs for that included in this grant. But the grant is strictly for the group meetings?
What they've approved.
Okay.
Right. GoCap has strictly approved the treatment part. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of Resolution 168, 2017, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, a resolution is...
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Except...
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Any questions? Thank you, Ms. Hurley. This time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments that you'd like to make, come into voting, please. State your name, your county of residence, and your concerns. Seeing none, that concludes the public comments. Council comments? Matt Hollis?
I'd like to publicly state that Joe Holloway was correct on that decision on the land acquisition. You're going off, and you hear me admit that.
Do you want me to give it? Joe, would you like me to give him more time? Any other council comments?
I'm not going to put Joe on the spot right now. His blood pressure's kind of high, because he's gotten redder than his shirt is. But good work there. I would like to acknowledge the passing of a friend, a friend of the county last week. Mr. Pete Richardson passed away, as many people know. I think the president may be bringing that up as well, but he was also on the Compensation and Allowance Commission that we're going to talk about later. I think he was here at the last meeting, but it's going to be a great loss to the county because he's been a friend of Wycomica County for many years. I attended a tri-county council health committee meeting. I think I'm the only one that's on it. As a matter of fact, I'm chairing it this past weekend. We've got a lot of people that are on this committee, and we bring up health issues and concerns and things that the tri-county council, that committee in general, can do for the well-being of this community. So, if anybody else wants to sit on that committee or have any ideas, please let us know. So, I don't think we'll meet again before Christmas, so I hope everybody has Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Other council comments?
I also would like to acknowledge Joe Holloway's diligence in this project. We haven't agreed on a lot of things in the past, and I'm sure we won't agree on a lot of things in the future, but I do appreciate your diligence. Thank you very much. This has been an interesting year, and this is our last meeting this year. And we've been blessed with new babies in our house in the past two weeks. And again, my condolences also to the Richardson family. He certainly has been dedicated to the Wycomica community. I'd like to thank all the people in Wycomica County for their support and advice during the year. We've had some challenges this year, and I'm looking forward to the election year next year. Set a number of goals this year and haven't accomplished as much as I'd like to accomplish, but I'm looking forward to next year and hoping we'll accomplish these goals next year. I wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and thank you for your advice and support for this year.
Thank you, John.
First of all, thanks to the council people for their comments. What you've seen here with this resolution today was basically how our government's supposed to work. We don't always agree, and I understand the executive side, it was free land, it was something for the future. A lot of us had different reasons. And sometimes we get caught up in that, I don't know what you call it, but, you know, the enthusiasm of doing things, I think is what it is. So, but this is how it works. The county councils checks and balances of what our government is. A lot of times, I get people ask, what does the county council do? Well, this was a good example of what we do. And for the most part, most things that come in front of this council get passed. Very few things get a no, but this one was worked out, and it didn't work out favorably. And this could have cost the county taxpayers a lot of money before it was over with if it didn't go the way it did. So, thanks, everybody, for their comments. It was, you know, just something that I came up with, and seeing it wasn't done, it needed doing, so it worked out. The other thing, Delmar Parade, we got to attend to that, some of the council people did, and it was a great, great event that day. A lot of folks out, like it was at the Salisbury Parade. I want to remark about Mr. Richardson. Mr. Richardson did a lot for the whole county. The more we talk to people, the more we find out, some of the donations he made. I've had a lot of calls about some of the things, and people were wondering, what are we going to do now? I had a call from folks that run the Willards Fireworks. My Pete practically supported that, you know, him and a couple of other businesses. So, a lot of concern out there, and we're going to miss Pete. John mentioned about not always agreeing. I think Pete and I, we agreed one day, and the next day we didn't, and I'm going to miss that with Pete. The other thing, it's Christmas, it's time for us all to reflect on our families and the joy we have in our lives, and thanks for the things that we do have. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? And presidential comments, it's been noted, as far as Pete Richardson was concerned, Pete was a really good guy. I think everybody knew him, liked him. They recognized the fact that Pete was an excellent businessperson, and he never had too many stones that weren't on terms where he was involved in any process whatsoever. He was very thorough in everything that he did. He was also very thorough in making sure that he contributed to the community, such as Joe had suggested. He served on many committees in Wycomica County, and I know he was always an advocate for property rights in the county. And to give you an idea of just how far Pete went into the community, there really, I don't think, as a council member here, who hasn't had one conversation or another with Pete Richardson, had a conversation with Pete Richardson over the telephone personally, because he would call us when he had concerns. You don't always get that with that many citizens, and there are very few, I think, that probably talk to every single council person here, one-on-one on the phone, but that's how Pete got involved. That's how he dealt with his personal life, that's how he dealt with business, and that's how he dealt with this community. So, he will sorely be missed. The other thing, as Joe had stated, Mardele had their Christmas parade. Mark, I know you were there. And Delmar had their Christmas parade, and they were great. Normally, we could go out and you could buy about, you could get about one bag of candy, and now we're up to four or five bags of candy, because there's kids all over the streets. It's the attendance for Salisbury, Mardele, and Delmar, you come around one corner, and the next thing you realize is, there's no way I have enough candy to pass out to all these kids. So, but we had a lot, we had a lot of fun. I'd like to thank all those communities for putting that event together, because obviously everyone had a great time. We enjoyed being there, and I know that there are a lot of people out there having a lot of fun. And I'd like to make sure also, as Councilman Hall mentioned, this is our last meeting, so I would like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a very Happy New Year for 2018. That being said, I have to read the legalese to get us out of this meeting and on to more. I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn from the legislative session to go into an open work session, followed by closed work sessions pursuant to the local government article. Section 3-305B, 1 and 7, as follows. Number one, a closed work session before the Urban Services Commission to consult with legal counsel to protect the attorney-client privilege. And number two, a closed work session before the county council to discuss personnel to protect employee confidentiality. So, if you can remember what I said, that is an entertaining of a motion.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting's adjourned. All right, see you later. We are now adjourned as the county council, entertain a motion to convene us the Urban Services Commission in open work session.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Are we doing?
Yes.
We're doing that first.
On the agenda, we have the CIP discussion.
I'm sorry, thank you very much. Yeah, I skipped ahead. Thank you, Matt.
Do we need to reconvene back into the...
We didn't pass anything yet, did we?
Well, I'll, how about if we just pull all that? So, we're now in open work session as Wycomica County Council. The first item on the agenda is the capital improvement program, budget and program. Mr. Strasburg?
So moved.
Good morning.
Not too sure how far you wanted to go with this this morning, so I'm going to provide you with just an overview of the CIP. To begin with, I'm sure you noticed that we revised the format of the CIP. We did that in an attempt to make it a bit more user-friendly and to provide you with more detail. We believe the new format makes it easier to see the funding sources for each project. It eliminates a lot of cross-referencing that you had to do in the past. So, hopefully, you've found these changes to be helpful. I'm going to start with the projects that we recommend for funding from the general fund. Those projects in the budget year, which is 2019, total $20 million, $14,791. Of that total, we're recommending the sale of general obligation bonds totaling $10,504,500. By comparison, last year, we recommended, oh, no, $10,937,223 in debt will be retired this year. So, the comparison between what will be retired and what we're going to borrow is going to result in a modest reduction of our total outstanding indebtedness. We're proposing $7,260,291 in Pago funding. This compares to $7,000, $7,2492 last year, so quite similar. Finally, we recommend that we utilize $2,250,000 in prior-year bond proceeds that covered projects that are now closed. So, we wish to reprogram that money rather than to leave it lying idle. The general fund major spending falls into three broad categories. Board of Education, priority projects, $7,365,000. A new public safety building, $5 million... A new public safety building, 5 million, 189,500 dollars. Airport improvements, 3 million and 50,000 dollars. That accounts for, those three projects account for 78 percent of the proposed general fund spending. Other general fund projects include for the Circuit Court, a million, 280. Corrections, 841,291 dollars. Public Works, 500,000. The nursing home, 450,000. Roads, 325,000. Parks, Recreation and Tourism, 213,000. Health Department, 201,000. The Extension Service Building, 125,000. The Public Library, Main Branch, 25,000, in contingency of 200,000 dollars. In addition to county general fund sources, 20 million, 302,775 dollars will come from federal, state, and other grants to support additional capital investments in the county. So, when added to the county general fund projects, this brings the total capital investment in the county to 40 million, 793,850 dollars. Total investment by department is shown on page one of the CIP itself, along with a breakdown of the various funding sources. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Another question. Larry, yeah, I was looking at the public safety building. You have 5 million, 189,500 dollars for two years. Do you have a location yet?
We do not, Larry. We're in the process right now. One of the things that we've done is, is we have engaged an architect, Crosby and Associates, from Cambridge. They're very, they specialize in public safety buildings. We're waiting to see what the footprint of this building would look like and get comfortable with what that footprint would look like before we actually zero in on a site, because the footprint naturally is going to impact the size and configuration of the site. So, there are various sites that we have looked at initially, but we've not zeroed in on an individual site at this point in time.
Is there any thought of renovating a current structure?
Well, the problem with that would be, I don't know how to renovate the current structure and house the officers at the same time.
No, I'm not talking about the current sheriff's office. I mean, have you looked at a building that's already existed? It's already standing, and then renovating that? Or are we talking about building from the foundation up?
We, at this point in time, we would be looking to build from ground up, but I could answer that question better once I see what the building footprint and design would look like, to see whether or not there is a vacant building in the county that could be repurposed. So, I really can't answer that at this point in time, but that's part of the due diligence.
Okay. And how did you come up with that exact number, 10 million, 379?
It goes back to, it goes back two years when we initially met, and we looked, at that point in time, Larry, we looked at the city of Salisbury's building.
Okay.
We sized it for our force. We took the costs of that building, bought them up-to-date for current construction costs, and just by extension said, it's probably going to cost us, again, at this point in time, it's an estimate. It's a planning number. I can't give you a hard number yet.
I'm not usually one to throw out estimates either. It's rounded off.
Yeah, no, we, you know, there was some, you know, there was, there was well-thought-out projection at that point in time. But again, that's based on the city of Salisbury's building.
On their building.
Which may be completely different than the building that would be designed for the, for the county force. So, it's a planning number.
Are we planning on housing anybody else in that building, or just for the sheriff's office?
Emergency services.
Emergency services, and the 911 center as well?
Yeah, that would be, that would become their primary site. The existing space they occupy would be the backup site.
Would they be doing dispatching for the sheriff's office?
Yes. In all likelihood, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is, is there any consideration of using land the county already has to house this, or is it acquiring?
I don't, I don't know that we have land, Mark, that is located appropriately and is serviced by utilities. One of the things that the sheriff has suggested is that he really wants and needs very quick access to both Route 50 and 13s, and that, and that makes sense.
So, he's got a location in mind?
He, he's got a location in mind. We've driven, the executive staff has driven the appropriate parts of the county, understanding that we need public water and sewer, and there are other sites that are of interest. But again, I can't zero in on a site specific until I know what the footprint looks like.
A lot of work.
Yeah, I appreciate the new format. I think it is good, because there was so much cross-referencing, and it got, it got kind of.
It was a difficult, it was a difficult report to work with, and we recognize that. We felt that we wanted to take a step forward, and I'll give credit where credit is due. We really patterned after the Board of Education's CIP, which we think is an excellent document.
Right. The reference that you have, old money, is that money that was previously bonded that just hasn't been spent yet?
Yeah, that's money, John, that's just lying idle, and it doesn't make sense for the money to lie idle when investment rates are so low. So, you know, if we're borrowing at two and a half percent, and we're getting about 1% on our investments, it makes sense to take that money and spend it as opposed to borrowing.
Wayne, you were talking about investing in the airport.
Yes, sir.
Boy, are you really? Seventy million dollars? Of course, that's through 23, but I noticed the 2019, and it's 8 million, and then that's up to 52 million in 2020. How much of that's federal money?
Um.
Hopefully, all of it, huh? Probably not.
Not quite all of it, Joe, but what we, what we are.
Our state money, federal or state money?
Yeah, what we're investing out of the general fund in 19 and 20 is a little bit over 5 million dollars. I anticipated your question. I didn't know who it would come from. But federal money in 2020 is 36.45 million. State money is 3.75 million.
So, you're going, you're going to bump another 12 million into the airport?
Public-private is 7 mil. Well, again, this is planning. This is planning, and what, what I would suggest is that we have a really comprehensive work session on the airport, because the new airport manager is quite good, as you know, has a lot of very exciting plans. There are a lot of moving parts there, and I think that council really, really needs to understand how that fits together, what the funding sources are going to be, and what the benefits of that investment are going to be in the immediate and the long term. So, yeah, they're, they're, they're big numbers, but again, the county's portion of it is 5 million. I'll go back to the point that I made earlier. We, we.
Excuse me, what's the county's portion in the 19? You've got 8.8 million there. What's the county's portion? Is it 5?
Don, was it 3 million?
It's 5 over two years.
It's 5 million over two years. I think it's 3 this year. In round numbers, Joe, 3 this million. 3 million this year, 2 million next year. But we were talking earlier about the point that we look at the airport, and we look at how the assets there have been allowed to deteriorate, and, you know, the only way that we can bring those assets up to speed is to source funding, because the airport doesn't generate funding that will support that kind of investment in and of itself.
And that's, you just said that, and I'm, so I know things need fixing and things need repairing, but is, is the investment going to be worth it?
Well, that's, and I think that's a.
Expansion and.
That's a discussion that we need to have. Don, Don has convinced the executive staff and the airport board, but, but I think council certainly needs to understand that and to be comfortable with it, because it's a big commitment. Understand that.
On the page about projects by funding source enterprise funds, does that mean that for about fiscal year 19, a 470,000 dollars in the runway extension, is that something that the airport itself is actually contributing through there?
The runway extension funding, John, will basically come from the federal and the state government. The, the county would contribute very little to that project. Those are the kinds, those are the kinds of investments that the federal and state aviation administrations participate in.
Right.
Now, there may be, there may be a lag in their timing of funding, and we'll have to deal with that from a cash flow standpoint. We're going to, one of the things we haven't done over time is we have not been as aggressive with lobbying the federal administration, Federal Aviation Administration, and the state administration for funding at the airport. And we intend to be a lot more aggressive with that, because there's money there. You've got to convince those administrations that the money is well-invested, but, but I think we can do that, just like we have to convince you that our portion of the money invested is, is, is well-spent.
The reason I ask is that on page four, it says, "Projects by funding source."
Right.
And then below it says, "Enterprise funds."
Enterprise funds.
So, those monies there are coming from those particular enterprise.
Coming through the enterprise itself, yes.
Itself, okay.
Yes. That's not county general fund money. Those would be funds, those typically, John, are going to be at the airport, they would be the county's or the airport's match portion for federal and state grants.
Okay.
Which typically run about 10 percent.
Got you. Larry? Yeah, how many runways do we have out there? Didn't we just extend one, like last year?
We, well, yeah, it was longer ago than that. We have two.
I know, we were talking about funding for it.
We have two runways, and what, what happened, what happened with the extension, it's runway 1432 that got extended. At the point in time that that was put forward to the FAA, it was, it was put forward that the runway would be extended further than in fact it was, but the FAA did not see the justification for that extension at the time. Piedmont Regional Jet Fleet changeover is the trigger that has now provided us with the ability to go back to the FAA and say, we now need that further extension. And, and, and the reason we need that extension is for the, for the RJ's to be able to take off with a full fuel load.
Right.
They can, can operate, but they can operate at less than full capacity with the runway that we have. So, that triggers the extension.
Once they're rehabbed, extended, whatever, we'll open ourselves up for larger carriers.
And you open yourself up to a lot of different aeronautic operations, not just passenger service freight operations, because then you can bring in larger jets with larger payloads, because you have the runway length to both land and get those jets back up.
Okay, good. I was trying to see or figure out some of these rehabs. Where is the ARF crew stationed? Do they have their own building?
Empty hangar. Well, yeah, there's a hangar that we're utilizing right now, and we, we, we put a, put a modular building behind the hangar that houses.
For housing.
The crew right now. That's not a good permanent solution, and it's probably, in the long run, that's pretty valuable ramp space. It's probably not the best place to have the ARF crew. The ARF crew should probably be relocated. So, when you look at, an analogy would be, that ramp space along the terminal and across those hangars is your most valuable retail frontage. And that's where you want your profit-generating activities, to the extent you can place them there. You want your operational facilities not in that prime ramp space.
So, they're going to be relocated in the future?
In the long run, that would be the.
Are they going to be in one of these hangars that's going to be renovated, or are they going to have a totally separate building?
It would be a new building.
It would be a new building.
It would be a new building. It would be a multipurpose building.
Okay, good, thank you.
But it would be designed for ARF. We've never had, we've never had a building at the airport that was specifically designed for ARF.
I saw them in the different hangars that they were working on, the jets.
Correct. So, it, it, it was, it was practical at the point in time that that was.
For the Piedmont crew.
Devized, but it's no longer pragmatic, and, you know, the aeronautic industry has changed over time. So, in the long run, it doesn't, it doesn't work when you cast it out.
Thank you.
Sure.
Mark?
I saw on there the plans for cabins at Cedar Hill and moving forward with Pirate's Wharf. Could you talk about a little bit of the details there?
You could probably have Pam.
Or Pam, I know she was.
If she's prepared to do so.
Yeah, I mean, you know, just, I mean, I've had questions from people, you know, where the cab, where would the cabins be located, you know, on that, and then.
We're not that far.
Okay, you're not that far down?
Yeah, we're not that. I would tell you that at this point in time, it's conceptual. My primary concern with Pirate's Wharf is to stabilize the shoreline.
Yeah. Well, the cabins at Cedar Hill, I mean.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, you're on Cedar Hill.
So, yeah, they're, but both, there's one person who's very interested in both of those.
But, but in terms of giving you a discreet plan right now, we're not that far.
So, it's just money to move forward with the planning that Pirate's Wharf will go from there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And just kind of a placeholder for Cedar Hill, then you'll develop plans about what will happen there?
Yes.
Talk about it down the road?
Yes. And we can talk about it when you, I'm sure that you're going to, you're going to want to talk to Parks, Recreation and Tourism about their various projects, and at that point in time, I'm sure Pam and Steve can provide you with more detail than I can right now.
What is to be determined? What is that funding source when it says to be determined?
To be determined.
To be determined. So, it's kind of an unknown, right?
It's, we'll go look for, we'll look for grants if they're available, or we'll look for low-interest loans if they're available. The project doesn't happen if we can't find a funding source.
Okay. And I, I like your idea where we could probably do workshops where we'll break it down, where we'll do the airport as one work session, and maybe recreation parks for one work session, or, you know, together with maybe another area. But I think that's a good idea.
Sure, absolutely.
And try to take this whole thing as one big, huge project.
No, it's, there's so many details involved in this, in this document and in this plan that you really need to segment it so that you can really get the detail and the understanding that you need to be comfortable with the investment that we're.
Right, right. The only other question I had was, in your capital project funding, you're talking about new money in 2020 of about 8 million dollars. In, in light of what the PowerPoint that you had the other night, and you were talking about our debt obligation as to where we're getting to that 12 percent window, how do you think that the 8 percent scheduled for fiscal year 2020 is going to be realistic if we're this close already to the debt?
I'd have to go back and look at the debt schedule, John, but I think that we're retiring significant amounts starting in, in '20. So, I think that we'll retire more than the 8 million that we proposed borrowing.
Okay.
Again, we think that it's, it's a responsible tactic to keep our borrowing in line, at this point in time, in line with what we're retiring, because we're so close to that PNI limit. We're far away from the charter limit on total debt, but keeping your principal and interest at 12 percent is very important. And one of the things that we've got to bear in mind is that we're in an interest rate environment where you're probably going to see rates ticking up. So, I, I think we need to be very careful with that.
The only other thing I had was, with the large plans on Warwick's, the new academic building, do we have any feel for how the state's going to be with these major contributions?
I don't, and honestly, I think Dr. Hoy coming in is obviously going to be important. When we met with him to review his CIP, he didn't feel that that was anything the state was going to take on. When we met with him to review his CIP, he didn't feel that that was anything the state was going to take on anytime soon. But that may change. You know, the state's fiscal house is, is something I, I really can't talk about.
'22 is a long way out, too.
It's, yes, it's a long way.
Well, that's going to be my question. This is not planned for any, for the coming fiscal year. I know there's been an, an idea that, you know, this is more of a long-term thing and not necessarily an immediate thing. So that it's possible that could be pushed back, you know, if there's not a need for it.
It's entirely dependent on state participation. You know, again, for the public's benefit, you know, this is a planning document. And even the 2019 numbers that we call our budget year are still subject to our borrowing. They're subject to our economic and fiscal fortunes. So this, this budget year, we call it the budget year, is the year that we have the most detail with and the year that we're most comfortable with in terms of affordability. But it's still, you still have to approve the budget that takes effect on July 1 in terms of pay go, and we still have to go to the bond market to see what the interest rate environment, what the borrowing environment is at the point in time we go to market, probably back looking at October, November of next year. So again, this is not, you know, this is not hard lined until certain next steps take place.
So this nearly 28,000, starting 2021 for the Warwick buildings is just a guesstimate? And there's really been no discussion with the feds or the state on this?
Yeah, that, that's something, again, you know, that question is best posed to Dr. Hoy, but.
Did he give you those figures?
He gave us those figures, but he felt, you know.
Right now, it looks like a wish list.
It's nothing that's imminent, given the state's fiscal situation. And, and, you know, as I think everybody knows, the, the proposed change in the federal tax code is going to have implications on the state's budget. So until that unfolds.
We've got to see what happens with that.
You know, we have to see. So that may change.
Understood.
And that may change a lot of things fiscally.
Any other questions? All right, well, thank you very much. It, it's a lot of work and I, I really, again, I really like the way that you thought to go ahead and make the changes you had because it certainly is making a lot easier read.
Good.
We don't have to chart out to here and chart out to there.
I, I have to tell you, I did not like that report, so.
No need to reinvent the wheel.
I'm happy to see it changed as well.
Thanks. Looks good, thank you. Next item on the agenda is loans from the Maryland Department of Natural Resources. I know we have Mr. Steve. I don't see Mr. Steve, but Pam, are you here?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm Steve today. Sorry, you're stuck with me. Pam Olin, Deputy Director of Rec Parks and Tourism. I'm here today to talk to you about two agreements that we have received from the state, from DNR. These are loans, no interest loans, that were being offered to, to do shoreline protection at Cove Road and at Roaring Point. Both of those locations are vulnerable to a major weather event. If you've been out to Roaring Point anytime recently, you'll notice there's a major drop off. We're having severe erosion issues. And every time we have a storm, we kind of keep our fingers crossed that that area doesn't take any more damage than it currently has. Both of these loans would be, the Cove Road one is a 15-year no interest loan. So the payments based on the amount of money that we're, that we're projecting would be a $6,700 payment in the fiscal year, in the budget. Again, both of these loans are, you do not make your first payment until you have actually 100% completed the project. So we're sitting here on almost, in almost January. It, we haven't had any drawings, we haven't done any work. This is, we have preliminary sketches from DNR that helped us come up with these dollar amounts to protect those areas. But our best estimate is that the first time we would have to make a payment on either one of these loans would actually be fiscal '20. Because you would make your first payment on July 1 of the year after we've completed the project. So we would expect we would complete these projects in fiscal '19, which means first payment would be due in fiscal '20. Second piece of this is that what we're agreeing to is allowing us to hold, is to, for the state to hold this money for us. There is possibility of grant for both of these projects. But we don't yet know if that grant is available. Actually, I just received an email while sitting in here about a funding round for some shoreline protection grant and some meetings being held in January to find out about those. So what we're asking for is permission to be able to sign these agreements and lock in this money at 0% interest to the county. But investigate other options where we don't even have to pay them back. But if we don't lock in this money, they can offer the money to somebody else. And we would not then have the ability to borrow to do these projects at 0%. We could borrow on, in any of our regular funding sources, but again, it wouldn't be at a 0% interest. So Cove Road is a 15-year payback term. Roaring Point would be a 20-year at $10,000. And that is, that is basically the information as simply as I can make it.
I like the idea of zero interest loans. I like the idea of loans you don't have to pay back better.
Well, and that's why we're saying is, is that we're not stopping investigating other options. But again, if we don't lock these in, then this option is off the table.
With that said, I do have a question. I was looking at the areas that we're talking about. Would that be riprap on these beaches?
It would be actually out a little bit. Right now, we've got two very preliminary conceptual drawings. They both would be away from the land, so they would be protecting, be a little along the lines of the riprap or the berm that was kind of created, I think, at Cedar Hill, kind of over from the harbor. You've got kind of a little inlet, and then you've got another one. And you've got kind of this protected cove at Cedar Hill.
You're talking about jetties?
These wouldn't be jetties. These would.
They're just breakwaters, basically.
They would be breakwaters. They, they would actually, depending on where we put them, you could potentially have some coming all the way to the land. And they're not suggesting that we protect 100% of Roaring Point. Really what they're suggesting is we protect the land that then protects our, our interest going back to our parking and our access point. Because if we don't protect, that's where we're actually having the most erosion. And that's, if we don't protect that, then we've lost our access actually to the land that we currently own.
Now, is this going to affect the beachgoers? Because I know a lot of people have been going to Roaring Point, Cove Point.
This would actually protect it so that we have the ability to.
So they'll still be able to go to the beach?
Yes.
Okay. Because I know that's going to be brought up.
Yes.
I, I'm all for protecting it.
In most cases, the state doesn't allow riprap anymore, total riprap, because it doesn't allow the animals to access the beach. So now you have to have like a staggered approach where you have little inlets that the crewers can get in.
So you won't see as many waves?
Yeah.
It's really just, it's just to slow down the, the water so that it doesn't take out what we currently have there.
Wayne was talking about securing the shoreline at Pirate's Wharf. Is there anything available for this from this same?
We, when we met with DNR, we actually talked about all three locations. And the answer to that question is potentially. We're not far enough down the road as to what we want to do at Pirate's Wharf for them to say whether or not, which program we meet their requirements on. So they said, yes, there's a potential for us to have money for Pirate's Wharf. Pirate's Wharf has a little bit trickier protection area because where we need to protect the most is at that really narrow spot on the river where the barges have to make the turn. So we can't go very far out into the river there at all. And so that changes, but it also changes what we're going to use the land for at Pirate's Wharf, where we can find money. So we purposefully did not submit an application for the location because we didn't yet, we're not far enough down the path on that.
That's fine.
In prior CIP, there was funding in the amount of $451,000 from a state grant. And this is coming from, actually all the way back to the 2015.
Yes.
So how does this play into that?
Well.
And was that ever, was that ever eventually spent?
No, we have not spent any money. Roaring Point has been in the planning process basically since I arrived with the county. And it's been one of those that we haven't envisioned where we could find the money. So we kind of kept leaving it there as a placeholder to remind people that, hey, we need to do something. But we didn't have a funding source. So we kind of just kept putting it on the document and putting it on the out years and not bringing it up. This year, through some discussions with DNR and actually having them come visit those locations, they said, hey, wait a minute, we think, first off, your estimate's too high, which, that's a great thing to hear. And second, hey, we think we can help you with these, these different programs. Again, we can get you in the queue right now to the no interest loan program. When we open the funding sources for the grant programs, we'll keep you in mind and we'll keep you informed as to when those, that timeframe is. So again, we're viewing this as locking in this money. And this money, we don't have to spend and finish the projects. The projects, if, if we sign these agreements, they have to be completed by June 30, 2021. So it's not even obligating us that we need to go ahead tomorrow and start these projects because we've got to get this done in six months' time. This is locking in this money for us until June 30, 2021. Let us investigate this spring if there's any grant opportunities that might come available with the state through the end of their fiscal year or their start of their new one. But this money then would be reserved for us.
And this is the money that, I guess, is what is reflected in our current CIP?
Yes. We actually had these conversations at about the same time. We were talking with them, and that's how the numbers got reflected in this year's CIP.
And the reimbursement for services amount, the 8491?
It's a.
That's about a 4% rate.
Yeah, it's a, it's very specific in the loan agreement that they get a percentage of the project. And they're, they're giving us technical guidance. So they would help us review specs, pick an engineering firm, pick a construction firm, give us their bidder, give us the best bidders to bid these projects out. So they're giving us technical guidance that we don't personally have in our department and may not have much of in the county as a whole. So that's their fee for this.
For a minute, I thought it was the cost to lend us the money.
We are getting something from that cost, though. We are getting a lot.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, no, no.
We're getting it. So.
I, I know.
You can look at it either way, but yes, sir.
No, it is. I thought it was like the cost of the loan, but I mean, it isn't. No, you're right. It's technical assistance and that's, that's important. That's good. Is there ever funding available for beach replenishment?
We have not investigated that. So these are relatively small beaches. I, I think it's more of, if we don't protect the beach we have, we probably won't have a beach. But that is my assumption, based on the size of what we have.
Any other questions? Pam, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Pam. Next item on the agenda, Stormwater Management Update with Mr. Baker. Morning, Mr. Baker.
Hello.
Be good for the public, but a note to you.
Dallas Baker, Director of Public Works for the county. So over this past month, on our stormwater programs, we've concentrated on the two hotspots in the county from the August storms, Pratt Road and Kewood Drive. At Pratt Road, the storm rating question, or rather, the culvert question that the community had issues with has since been removed. The area's been stabilized. I believe there are pictures in your packet. If I can put them up on the screen.
I was going to ask you what pictures we're looking at. Like what that shows you, Larry, is where the culvert was removed.
Yeah.
And they had seating laid down on both sides of the ditch.
Yeah.
If the purpose of that culvert, if I can answer your question.
Yeah, absolutely.
If the purpose of the culvert initially was to be able to take heavy equipment across there to clean out that ditch, how are we going to clean out the ditch now?
Um, it's my understanding that the property owner has since granted us permission to turn around in his yard. That was a lot of the, a lot of the contention was that, at first, he wasn't happy with the 15-foot wide, 30-ton grade all doing a U-turn in his front yard.
Does he have grass?
He does have grass.
I don't know how that's going to work out.
Let me get some of my pictures. There with me just a minute. So I worked through these pipe removals. So this is the, this is along Pratt Road. This is where the, the culvert used to be. You can see where the, the straw matting has been placed down with seating. This was taken the day of, of the removal. So you don't see any grass growing up there quite yet. All these shots are just of the, of the same thing. The, the channel, the channel leading from, this is a view from, on Pratt Road, heading down towards Pemberton Drive. Again, same thing from just a, a different angle. Yeah, same thing. Just taking pictures of the stabilization just for documentation. Any questions on this section?
Well, I guess the real question would be as far as, where are we as far as, this covers one item on Pratt Road. Where are we as far as a larger plan such as the rest of the ditches further down Pratt Road? Or the water that's going to be going down into the Mistale area? Whether we've gotten an overall idea of how we want to address those issues? Because as it is right now, even removing the culvert, my guess is if we have another rain similar to what we had before, you may see that a duplication of problems unless the ditches are cleared all the way through that area. And you might see the same problem in Mistale as well. I'm, I'm charging just this area right now.
Right. No, I understand. At the last meeting, we, we discussed doing a feasibility study, which was my impression that the council did not want to do. So I've not proceeded with that any further. But that would be the, the direction I would recommend if you're looking for more of a, of an area-wide approach to drainage.
I think we did want to do a.
I thought you said George Mosson. You were hiring George Mosson.
Yeah. Engineering, you know, do the short-term but a longer-term engineering study. I thought, I thought there was support for that.
Okay, there, there, okay, my, my misinterpretation. It was very.
You had a, a dollar figure for that.
Yes, yes.
And I thought the council kind of balked at that.
Well, yeah, and I thought that part of what we were going to do, I thought you said you were engaging the resources of an engineering firm.
Correct.
And the engineering firm was going to pursue a grant for a feasibility stu, feasibility study.
Yes, that, that was our plan, correct. And.
Yeah, but, yeah, I thought it was. I agree with Dallas. I thought it was the council's consensus that we didn't like the dollar figure that was attached to just the, them trying to get the grant.
There were examples of ball fields and fire department feasibility studies and why the county didn't like them. So I just, the message to me was clear, don't, don't do the feasibility study.
So that was a high consultant study then? A hundred grand?
No, no, it was like fifteen thousand. Yeah, I can actually pull that uh, that last uh, report up. Give me a minute.
I think part of what it was, we were concerned by, by the county itself couldn't, couldn't do the work. And then you just made the comment that you only had one person working for you that could.
Right, I've only got one engineer.
So, but we do want a solution to it. So how are we gonna get there if you're saying? How, how are we gonna get there? How, how are you gonna plan for the next storm?
And, and for that, I need the feasibility study. I, I can't, I mean, I can, I can't just go out and pull pipes out of the ground and throw larger pipes in without knowing what the impact of that's gonna be on folks downstream or if to know if that's even the most cost-effective alternative. It might be that the storm gets rerouted into another direction. And for that, I need a consultant to take a look at that and reply back to me with, well, here, here is the most cost-effective option you can do to address the issue.
Right, is that, if I remember correctly, we've had three severe flooding situations within a twelve-month period. And we wanted to resolve that because the last one wasn't the last one.
No, I, I very, I'm, it was, it's still my recommendation to move forward with the feasibility study. If council would like that, I certainly can.
And there's no other options?
I need the report to tell me what the options are. I can't just go out and pull a pipe out and put a larger one in.
I was wondering about other options other than the feasible, the feasibility study, but.
Well, well, I mean, I, I think there was a discussion, I mean, you know, there's Pratt Road, but there's also, you know, wider issues, you know, obviously, you know, down in Allen. I think, you know, we've, we've talked some about things like that. I mean, about a wider county, you know.
And, and there, there, there are other efforts going on. We are still talking, following along our three E approach of engineering education and enforcement.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I mean, I guess maybe we didn't really come to a consensus about, you know, a, a larger kind of what effort that would obviously include Pratt Road.
Yeah, well, again, for the area that we're talking about with Pratt Road does cover almost four hundred and sixty acres of a drainage area. I mean, that's, that's a sizable chunk. And we, we're still talking about moving forward with, with the, the regional meetings through the air, through the county to discuss.
Have you done any yet?
No, we haven't started any yet. We're, we're, we've got our drainage maps out and we're, we're planning areas that we want to, want to address.
Because you were gonna let us know so the council members could attend some of those meetings.
Yeah, and we're expecting this to start in two thousand eighteen.
Good idea. That feasibility study.
So the question right now is, does the council have appetite to fund the fifty thousand dollars to get the engineer to pursue grants?
That, that, yeah, and, and so I've got money in my, my budget, public works budget, that I can cover that. Let me pull this up real fast. I can show you what the uh.
Shouldn't that come from the county executive to us and then we approve it, or does that, we just approve it?
Well, it, it's, it's, it's money that I've got in my budget and I've bid this out through our process to get, to get uh.
So you've done an RFP?
Yes, yes, and that was, you had asked me to send that to you shortly after the, that last uh, meeting and.
So does the feasibility study include all areas or just the Pratt Road?
It includes the Pratt Road.
Just Pratt Road?
Well, with that, but that.
In the area.
This Hunter's Mill and, you know, it affects a lot of.
But not on the east side?
No, not just, just.
We've got a lot of concerned citizens on the east side.
Yes, so again, I, I, I've gotta start somewhere. And the, the direction I understood was start with Pratt Road.
Yeah, I might have to start from Pratt Road.
Yeah, of course.
I mean, if we, if we wanna do the whole county, it's, it's, you know, the price.
My colleague just threw me under the boat.
When it's a start. But, but on the same, in the same vein, uh, we, I don't know if we wanna piece mill it out. I think we should get a broader idea of what it's gonna take as a whole. Because as you've said many times, the problem at Pratt Road doesn't actually start just in Pratt Road. It starts in another sector of the county.
Right, and that's why it's the full four hundred and sixty acres uh for the drainage study to cover.
Well, and, and to Larry's point, um, it, I mean, I know we've talked about it before, there, I think there does need to be a county-wide storm, you know, examining stormwater. So it's not just Pratt Road, but it is the east side and things like that. But, you know, you do need to start somewhere, so, um, yeah.
So, do we want to do the feasibility study?
So it's fifteen thousand to, just to try to get money to do the feasibility study, or is it fifteen thousand to do the feasibility study?
Well, it was fifteen to do the feasibility study and they were also gonna try to seek out a grant.
Exactly, yeah, it's fifteen for the, for the full study.
Okay.
And then I believe it was, if all we were funding was the grant writing proposals, it was approximately thirty-five hundred.
Can I just ask for clarification? The grant fund money, would that be used to do a county-wide study? Or is the grant fund money used to do some type of?
For Pratt Road, to do the drainage feasibility study for Pratt Road.
But the grant fund money, that's just for Pratt Road as well?
Just, we would pay the consultant thirty-five hundred dollars to solicit the project to state agencies for grant farming to do a feasibility study for the four hundred and sixty drainage, four hundred and sixty acre drainage area of which Pratt Road is part of.
That's what she's asking, why, what, and I guess what I'm thinking is why, why don't we, for that thirty-five hundred dollars, say if we can't get grant for the whole county? While we're at it, why can't we do that?
We don't have a, a scope of work for the, for the whole county. And certainly that's something I can take a look at. But that thirty-five hundred dollars is for the Pratt Road feasibility study. If we're talking about one for the entire county, that's another RFP that'll have to go out and I'll have to come back with a, another, how much that's gonna cost.
And the thirty-five hundred is not just to pay them to go out and solicit a grant. It is also to do a feasibility study.
No, to do the study is fifteen thousand. To just write the grant proposals is thirty-five hundred.
Would that be part of the fifteen?
Yes.
Okay, so it's, we're talking about fifteen, thirty-five hundred of it is for grants, the rest of it is to, to a feasibility study.
Correct.
Solely for Pratt Road, that four hundred some?
Yes.
Who's on first? But I agree with what Joe said, maybe, I, I think he said it, Joe. Maybe that thirty-five hundred could be looking for a broader range of grants.
That's something we can explore.
I don't know, when you have to fill out for grants, that can get off.
That's something we can explore.
It only, it rains in more places than Pratt Road.
It does.
Um, Mr. Baker said that he would have to do another RFP for a county-wide feasibility study, and I would like to see that done.
Okay, that's. I can at least do the RFP and find out how much it's gonna cost. That's not, that's not a big deal.
And then come back with figures. Is that, I, we can't leave the rest of the county out?
No, and it was never the intention to.
Well, they're basing the thirty-five hundred on a very select area. If we go back to them and say, oh, more than this, then you're probably gonna be looking at, you know, fifteen thousand dollars, which is what we're paying for them to do with the feasibility study and the grant work. You follow me?
Yeah, I do, I, I do.
I mean, that thirty-five hundred, obviously, for the amount of work it takes to solicit grants, that thirty-five hundred dollars isn't gonna go very far. Is that right, Weston? Okay, so.
Well, we can't stop there. We need some figures to decide whether we're gonna do this or not, cause.
At some point in time, we, we.
You know the people on the east side are very concerned about this.
Uh, everybody is, yes.
I know, so we can't just limit to one area.
Yeah, but we do need to start somewhere.
Yeah, we need to start somewhere. We just can't wait to do a study on the whole county while the other one just sits still idle.
You gotta start somewhere.
Everybody else is sitting idle too.
Just, we might, we might be a little more premature in doing this. Might end up like some other reports we had, where we go ahead and do the feasibility study, realize we can't find it, and we put it on a shelf and it sits there for the next fifteen years.
Truth to that.
So maybe this would be a good litmus test. Go ahead and do this Pratt Road, see what the, the cost estimate would be for actually addressing some of these drainage issues. And then we can say, all right, well, if we spend out of the whole county, is that something we can either consider to do, or do we just focus on the hotspots?
That makes sense.
Okay, so we're in consensus to move forward with it?
Yes.
Everybody good?
Good.
Okay, okay. Next time I come here, I'll have. Okay, uh, so the, the, the second section that was focused on this past month was uh, South Kaywood Drive. We, uh, we, we partnered with the city of Salisbury. They have a closed-circuit television camera that can run through the, uh, the storm rain pipes out there. And I, I can show you some of the video. Uh, what I'll tell you, oh, that's, sorry, that's not the beginning of it. What I can tell you is that the pipe's in excellent condition. There were no blockages, there were no obstructions, no collapses. There wasn't any, barely any root intrusion at the joints. Most of the joints look like, look as good as they, they did when they were first uh.
How big were those pipes? They look kind of small.
They range in diameter from, they start at fifteen, then they go up to eighteen to twenty-four. So, yeah, it's, it's, you know, the smallest we typically use is a fifteen. So, and I, and I, and I can show you all of these if you're interested, um, but uh.
Are those county pipes?
No, these are actually the private pipe. And this section is the private pipes that run behind Kaywood Drive. It's not county, yeah, it's not county pipes until we get further south.
So even if they're clear from obstruction, they're probably not even large enough to handle what we face.
Yeah, and so just, just to, well, that's something.
They mount that on a rack.
The um, what you, what you um. Well, yeah, it's, it's corrugated pipe, but that's also kind of an example of how you can tell that there's not any obstructions. I mean, if it was a smooth, flat rolling, some, the dirt would be built up. But what we do is reran this camera from behind Miss Walls' property all the way to the pond. And what I can tell you is, it all pretty much looks like this. It's, it's, it's all clean, free of obstruction. Yeah, so if you wanna sit through about forty-five minutes, this is, this is what we're gonna look at. Now, uh, I think it stops right here at this first joint and you can see that they'll do a, oh, they went past that one. Yeah, they'll, they'll, at, at, at some of the other pipes, they, they stop and they do an uh, an inspection of the joints as well. But, yeah, so this.
How does that move through there?
It's, it, it, think of like a little remote control car with a camera attached, but it's on a wire instead of wireless. And they just ru- run it down um, from one end to the other.
Seeing the animals when you're in there?
Snakes, alligators.
This is one of the neighbors' pipes. Um, what about the county's pipes? Do you have that as well?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the, the, the whole section is, this is from.
I mean, we don't, I guess we don't really need to see it if you're just, if you, if you know.
Yeah, if I bring up the county section, this is what you're gonna see as well.
There was no obstruction in the pipes to Parker Pond?
None.
None at all?
None, the, the pipes for Oakland or for, and what this does is just goes back to, the, the, the system was not sized to handle the amount of rain that we got at that storm. This is the, you know, this is a perfect example. You know, we, we've gone out in storms where we've gotten three inches of rain and the roads were clear, the roads were dry, the pu- the system was handling it perfectly fine. But when you get eight inches of rain in six hours, our pipes flood. So I guess here's an example of how they inspect the uh, the joints. The, the camera can actually do a full one sixty, I'm sorry, three sixty. There's a critter, yeah.
In light of what, in light of what John Hall said, I think it's a really important point. There's two things that we're looking at. Through a feasibility study is one, and for lack of better words, that's what I would call like geographical logistics. Like where do you put a pipe, where don't you? Uh, what do you do as far as continuing on with the ditch, where don't you? The second part of it, which, we're not gonna be able to achieve the geographical logistics until we figure out what the responsibilities are of the county versus the landowner. And that's, that's a big part of it. We can recognize all the problems and what the solutions would be to fix it. But I guess sooner or later, as a county, we have to come to some decision that, who is responsible?
Yeah, and, and that partially comes out of the, out of the enforcement side, so that you, when you, you end up, excuse me. When you end up with a uh, a section of uh, of swale that has uh, yeah, there's your critters. When you end up with a uh, a, a, a section of swale where a neighbor's gone out and filled it in with dirt or they've built a fence line across it, or they're just dumping trash in the back of it. It's, it's, it's the property owner's responsibility to clean it out. And right now, we do not have any type of tool to make them gotten clean up.
Yeah, I, I had a call two weeks ago. I said, hey, just wanna let you know that the neighbor came with a bunch of leaves and dumped them, this is on Pratt Road, and dumped them in the ditch across the street. Right on Pratt Road.
Yeah.
Now, touching on what John was discussing or leading into, that, that belongs to private owners. What's gonna stop that three inch in eight hours, whatever it is? What is the property owner's li- um, liability with that? And what can we do to encourage them to make some changes? Uh, they need bigger pipes, it looks like, if they wanna stop the flooding.
No, I think the point here was that the pond level got too high and would not allow any flow, no matter what size pipe you had, in this instance right here.
Because the pond was covering it.
The pipe level, you're just gonna have backflow, so there is nothing that.
There's nothing they can do or we can do about that situation.
Well, I don't know, with all due respect, I don't believe the, and I wasn't out there that day, but I don't believe the pond was too high. Cause if you look at the pond in regular weather, I mean, it is, it's much lower than where that pipe comes out of the pond. It's, it's ten, ten, fifteen feet, isn't it, Dallas?
Well, what I can tell you is during, during this day when we were out there, the outfall was half submerged.
Oh, it was?
Yeah, so, I mean, and, and that was, you know, this was back on, well, December sixth. I mean, you know, we hadn't received any tremendous amount of rain at that point, but the outfall was, was half submerged, yes.
Is there a way to lower that pond level? I don't, I don't know anything about that pond, is there?
We, we can, yes, but then you run into problems with um, DNR fisheries, you run into problems with other property owners not appreciating the pond being lowered.
Can you do that? Well, you don't know, we didn't know the storm was coming up.
Well, we, we, we do go out and open those gates when we know there's a, a large storm coming. Yes, exactly. We'll go out, we'll open them up uh, to, to try to mitigate some of that, that flood.
That goes into Shoemaker, right?
Yes, eventually.
Matt mentioned, you know, the store, the water coming up and maybe going back. Is, is there any way to put backflow preventers in these pipes to keep the water from coming back from the pond up?
You know, I, I, I've seen it done at locations and it's never been something that's really been effective. And the, the problem with uh, the backflow preventers on stormwater is all you take is a, is a stick getting in there. And that backflow is stuck open. Yeah, it's just, it, they, it doesn't work out very well.
Now, I have a question for the same area, and I, I discussed it or sent text, messaged or pictures of the area on Mount Herman Road prior to Kay Avenue, and I don't know if it was Weston responded. Somebody said it was the state's area. It was, the flooding was crossing Mount Herman Road, and matter of fact, when I was there, somebody in a state jacket pulled up in a private vehicle and looked at it. Are you familiar what I'm talking about?
Yeah, yeah, I, I know, we, we.
Are we working with them?
Yeah, yes, we, we are. We, on there, when there's areas that we know that are flooding due to maintenance concerns on the state system, we've been cooperating with them.
There was a lot of erosion around there, and they do have big bowlers for riprap or whatever you wanna call it, but eventually that road's gonna wash out.
So one section, though, that they've recently cleaned out for us is along uh, Maryland twelve, Snow Hill Road, between Nutter's Cross and um, Cardinal Drive. There was a, there's an old driveway uh, where the, there, and underneath there is a culvert. And you, you can see on one side, uh, between the driveway and Cardinal, the ditch was filled with water. Between the driveway and Nutter's, there was nothing. It was completely dry. And that was an example of, of a place where the, the pipe was clogged. So we reached out to the state and said, hey, can you guys clean this? And they, they went out and cleaned it for us. We've been working with them also in cleaning out sections of Peggy Neck Branch out by the bypass where there's been some sloughing from the slopes of the, of the, of the bypass into the, into the branch.
What about Canal Woods where the cross is under thirteen in that area that caused that flooding in Canal Woods?
A lot of that flooding has been related to the, to the railroads, um, and, and trying to get those increased. Really, it's between the city and the railroads. From what I understand, that battle's been going on for many years.
Is that the same situation up there by Pep Boys and going across the railroad track towards Deer's Head Hospital?
Yeah, that, that whole area is just.
I think thirteen flooded one time.
Yeah, th- thirteen's flooded there several times, yeah.
Would you have any staff available, Weston, that could sort of evaluate what other counties might be doing uh, for enforcement? And to separate the responsibilities as far as who keeps the dishes, dishes clean and whatnot? I mean, we went out and we actually, I know, uh, the county went out and actually took care of these backyards.
That's right.
For the people of Kaywood. And, you know, the thing is, um, I, I thought that was a good, I thought that was a, a favor that we did for those, uh, for those neighbors. So do we have anyone on staff that could maybe review what other counties are doing to, to come to a solution that's really definitive? That you can say, here's your responsibility. I know we have it with homeowners associations, but we don't have it with the population in general.
Yeah, so that's something we actually asked our legal department to take a look at and, and, and pull together what other loc- locations throughout the uh, throughout the state and area have, have been doing. And uh, I, I can go back to what we discussed last time. Pull this up real fast.
Is that dumping illegal, like the dumping of leaves and?
I don't think we have anything.
Yeah, we don't really, you, you, you're not supposed to impede the, the, the drainage flow, um, but unfortunately.
We don't enforce anything. We don't enforce anything?
On, on a public works side, I, I don't believe we have any, have any. Um, so. Some, some of the ordinances that were looked at, um, uh, drainage impeachments, nuisance ordinances, um, filling or placing of additional sediment. Let me turn this into a slideshow so it'll be a little larger.
Was that a recommendation to you previously?
Yeah, so this, this is what we had, uh, we had, uh, discussed a little bit at the last, um, at the last, uh, presentation in, in November. Um, so there was also, um, storm rain utilities, um, public drainage associations, public watershed associations. These are all types of legislation that have been acted in previ- in, in other jurisdictions. So, and then, uh, some examples from Montgomery County. I, I don't think we really have much interest in trying to take over anyone's, you know, there, there was a little bit of discussion, I think, on the, developing it more as a, um, like we do with the Urban Service Commission, where someone approaches us and says, hey, county, we want you to come in and, and, and take over our, our drainage swales, because, you know, maybe the HOA has gone defunct, which is usually what, what typically happens.
Are they allowed to?
Go defunct?
Yeah.
If, if nobody's there to run it, and they're not able, and they have no way to enforce due collection, there's not much of a choice.
That's a requirement for the county.
I think it's required for condominiums, I believe, but I think for just general subdivisions, um, there's just places all over that the HOAs aren't collecting their fees. But no, that, that would be a, a, a good way to start, to say you've gotta maintain your swales and ditches, and give these HOAs some type of teeth to, uh, have their owners commit funds to, to the, to the clean out of their, of these private areas. So we can, I, I can certainly put together more information about these, maybe have a, have a future work session that focuses exclusively on the, the enforcement side. Um, I think that might be a little bit better benefit. And start, maybe moving forward, focus on specific issues instead of, you know, bringing forward the, the, the feasibility study, bringing forward the, the larger study, but also, you know, specify, hey, this, this work session coming up is gonna be at the enforcement side.
Good.
Yeah, it's good.
Looks good to me.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna, uh, take a half hour recess for lunch, and, uh, when we come back, we'll be reviewing the, um, compensation commission. It's just a recess. Okay, thanks.